Call this meeting of the Harriman City Council April 6th, 2019 to order. Before we get started, we'll have a prayer from our Fire Chief Brad Daniels, followed by the pledge leads to the flag.
Chief, a pledge for your heavenly Father, I thank you for no day alive, Lord. I pray that you be with us, Lord, as we attend city business here tonight, Lord. I pray that you put you first in every decision that we make. I pray that you be with every family represented in this room tonight, Lord. I pray, Lord, if they're going through any kind of storms, Lord, I pray that they reach and grasp their hand, Lord, and look to you for answers. I pray that you be with us, Lord, as we leave, to us safe, going home, safe travel. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here are Cook.
Here.
Betty Holly.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Kenny Mead.
There he is.
Sam Russell.
Here.
Lonnie Rapp.
I'd like to declare a motion to approve the minutes of the March 19, 2019 meeting. Motion for Councilman Holly, second.
Second.
Second with Councilman Russell, Councilman Holly. Councilman Russell.
Yes, sir.
The floor is open for discussion. Call her, please.
Darryl Cook.
Yes.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion to pay the bills?
I'm making a motion.
Motion for Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Second, Councilman Cook?
Councilman Johnson.
No, sir.
Councilman Cook?
No.
Floor is open for discussion. Call her, please.
Darryl Cook.
Yes.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Motion carries. This time we'll hear from delegation. If you'd like to address this council, please stand, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm Bridget Woods. I'm here to address the comment, or the situation of my husband being sexually assaulted. He came and actually talked to-
Okay, hold up just one second. This board's not here to listen to that. Your husband is the one that works for the city. He'll need to get with the city manager and talk to him.
He already has.
They're looking into it. This board can't address that.
I thought that's what this was here for.
If your husband wants to come and talk to us, he can, but you can on his behalf. Anyone else like to? Talk to council. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Gary Paulson with the Tennessee Medieval Fair. I just wanted to share the good news that we were awarded the best 2018 annual festival. This was awarded by Nine Lakes Tourism, and that's 16 counties. And so we were recommended by Roan, Roan Elias, and so then we were the good ones. So just wanted to share the good news for the city. We're starting to plan our fifth annual Tennessee Medieval Fair. We've moved the dates to start on Memorial Weekend, so we don't conflict with the Scottish Festival and with high school graduations, or the Rhythm and Bloom Festival. So we start on Memorial Weekend and then go the first two weekends in June. And we're hopefully to have online ticket sales, so people can buy them in advance. And we've just purchased 10 billboards, one on the interstate and nine in greater Knoxville. We've also been reaching out to advertise in different ways with people who like events and costumes. They're called conventions for people who like superheroes. So we went to Chattanooga and had a three-day event down there to promote Harriman. So we're just starting to work on our advertising. We're working with all of our local actors and training them every week. And five of the actors that we have auditioned and trained here are now touring and going professional. So we're giving them the skills to keep on going. So we're very excited. I want to thank you for working with us.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Only two of the leads in our show are actually high school seniors from Roan County.
Sounds great. So forward to it. Thank you so much. Anyone else like to address council?
I would. Deah Jackson, Temperance Committee member. Just wanted to let the council know that we did, sorry, that we did meet Saturday afternoon and packed up the museum items at the Temperance Building, so they're ready to pack and they're ready to go. We've got a few things on the furniture that we want to secure, but other than that, they're ready to go, so whenever, whenever the Princess Theater gets ready.
Sounds great. Thanks. Anyone else like to address council? If not, I'm gonna back up one more. I didn't ask for a motion to pay the bills. Motion to pay the bills?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Russell, second, by Councilman Johnson. Councilman Russell.
No, sir.
Councilman Johnson.
No, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Call her, please.
Darryl Cook.
Yes.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Motion carries. This time we'll go into reports. I'm gonna move our rec director top. He's gotta go down and get softball started, so.
Apologize for my tardiness. Get 'em started, and I'll be going back down there. But as far as the recreation department, we're in our spring sports season. Opening ceremony for baseball is gonna be this Saturday, 9:00 a.m. at Drax Track out there. We've got a good, pretty local celebrity gonna be singing our national anthem for it, so I'd like to invite everybody to come on down and check out the festivities of that day. Softball opening ceremony will be Saturday, April 27th, at 9:00 a.m. Ongoing projects that we have in the department, of course, the new field out in South Harriman. Got some leeway on some topsoil. Gary Basely over at Mulch &amp; More has really helped us out with that. Gonna start seeding that stuff whenever the last load comes in tomorrow. The backstop is gonna be erected. Hopefully, it'll be done by the end of next week. We're gonna get started on it Friday. One of the lumps groups that's did a lot of work down at Riverfront Park, the concrete work, they're coming and doing the project. He finishes his job Thursday, and you can start Friday. Ongoing project, of course, with the eroding riverbank there at Riverfront. We've reached out to the local folks, excavating company, and we have quotes on different sections of the whole riverbank there. J.B. Asphalt with our walking trail. I'll be meeting with him on Thursday down at the park. We're gonna walk him and begin some moving forward on that. And just like to take a moment to kinda thank you all and commend Tasha West. She came in as my assistant director, and she's been invaluable, some of the things that she's been able to help me do. One of the biggest, busiest things for me is registration. She's really helped with that. She's doing some new programming, and we'll start seeing more of those programs getting off the floor. She's did a great job. And so, got a 9-10 softball draft that I'm about to go back to.
So Councilman Johnson's singing. Did you say, sir?
It's a special guest, though. I didn't want to reveal it at this moment. It ain't me.
Counselor, anything for-
Thanks, sir. The new baseball feels looking good. Appreciate all y'all's work.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Harriman Uto people.
Not my report that I haven't reported the previous month, but I do want to remind you, our new office is scheduled to open for business on May 6th. That is on Monday. We're in the process of moving things right now, and hopefully start moving people next week. We're also gonna be unveiling a new website this month. On the new website, you'll see a digital copy of the annual report, which I've provided each of you tonight. And if anyone in the audience would like a copy of this, I have extras with me. This is the first time we've ever done one. The intent of this document was just to have our customers, the ratepayers, the citizens of Harriman, get to know HUB better, what we're doing with our money, and what projects we have going on, and just some general statistics about us, and how we also give back to the community. I hope that everyone enjoys that. And we did produce that 100% in-house. As far as the design goes, we did have a company print it for us, because this paper wouldn't go through our printer. But otherwise, it didn't cost us much of anything. We are doing a golf tournament on April 18th. I think I invited you all last month, but if there's any questions, I would entertain them.
April 18th?
Yes.
Anybody have anything for Ms. Candace?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, we, I hope y'all got our stuff today. Sorry it was a little late, but it's the second day of the month, and we had to wait till yesterday evening to get some stuff from 911. We are in with Harriman Housing Authority with Ms. Amy Hall, and the police department are working on a project with her, basically elderly helping the elderly. And they're setting up, maybe we're getting some people, see if we're interested, to maybe set up a sewing thing for some people that live in the housing, and other people in the community at Clifton Manor, just to give them something to do, and they're gonna make some blankets and quilts. We're working with her on that. And also, myself and our police chaplains and the mayor have been working on a, we're having a drug awareness program at Harriman High School on May the 25th. And there'll be, Will West is gonna be a guest speaker there that night, and Sheriff Stockton's gonna be speaking that night. And we'll have some music and some demonstrations on drugs. The fire department's gonna set up and let people see their ladder truck and stuff in the parking lot before the program, so I'd like to keep that in mind. We'll be having some flyers by the 1st of May to go out for the program.
Anybody have anything for the chief?
Thank you, sir.
Fire department.
Mayor, you guys got my, my other two things I got. We're gonna be teaching a 64-hour basic firefighting class, the fire department, starting at the end of April. You'll see a lot of action at our training house at the end of Walden Street and around the old hospital. We'll be training around there. The next thing is the training property down there. Probably within the next two weeks, we're gonna start cleaning it up. We're just gonna get together. We're still waiting on the prison crew to let us know if they're gonna be coming, but we're gonna go ahead and start cleaning it down there and start making that property look better and stuff like that. I know Councilman Johnson asked me a couple times about it, and I was just gonna give an update about it. That's all I got. I'll take any questions you got.
Does anybody have anything for the fire chief?
Thanks, sir.
Library.
We have new books, actually $4,000 worth of new books at the state. Devastating purchase. There are adults and children's books, and a lot of audiobooks, too. The children's programs are going good, and she has the summer reading program almost all together, so there'll be lots of fun for the children to do this summer. We are getting three hotspots that we will be able to check out to the public, so that if someone doesn't have Wi-Fi or Internet at home to do homework with or whatever, they can check them out for a week at a time. We don't have them in-house yet, but they're all our own order. We are fixing to go to the Tennessee Library Association training for two days in Chattanooga. We were learning different things on the, new things that is going through legislation now for libraries and stuff, along with other library training for the library. That pretty much about covers it for us right now. Thank you.
Anybody have anything for the library? Building looks great lit up.
Oh, it does, does. And thank you for the dogwoods. They look wonderful.
Yeah, it looks good down there. Jake, if you have anything on the golf course?
Uh, no. Nothing immediate. Any questions from the council, I'd be happy to.
Driving range open?
Driving range open. We opened Monday officially. Credit cards and cash accepted. Golf course is finally starting to green up, which is nice, because we've been looking at it. It's been brown for a while, so. Yeah. Look, I'm looking out into the camera here.
Anybody have anything for Jake?
Sorry I'm late, too, council. I apologize.
Thanks, sir.
Chief Finance Officer.
I don't have anything at this time.
It's your turn.
I don't have anything, ma'am.
City manager, which counts.
I've got a few things council is aware of. Most of what I'm gonna mention, but I'm gonna go ahead and mention it on behalf of the public, most of the updates that I sent to you late last week. Do want to call your attention, though, to the few bills and objectives that are up here, so we do have the results of the strategic planning session up and out, so that they're there as a reminder each time we come to a meeting, what we need to accomplish in the next year or so. Also, I wanted to express my appreciation to Candace and HUB, and a number of her employees we met this morning to discuss the, I guess, why the building system works with regard to street lighting, traffic lights, and things of that nature, which had been kind of a question in the past, because there's different ways, depending on how it was initially put in, that that can be built, and that was a very, very helpful meeting. We've talked about that for a while, even going back and forth, Candace becoming the manager, and finally we were able to do that, and I thought it was very helpful. We have submitted our plans, it was on Friday we submitted our plans to T-DOT, the Margate Drive Project, and they quickly responded today, requesting additional information, so engineers will be working on that. That's the quickest response we ever gotten from them, but basically it was just to ask for more paperwork. We currently have the request qualifications open for engineering services related to the transportation alternatives grant, and that is the grant that will redo the sidewalks and add pedestrian lighting from Crescent Street intersection, Long Run Street, up to the high school. So that will be something that you'll be seeing in the near future, and the street committee will be working on that as the body that will serve as the committee to choose a firm direct mandate to council as a whole. Kenny has diligently been working on the, what is called the project initiation form 3-1 for the C-MAC grant for T-DOT. And just to give you an idea of what's involved, a lot of these grants, you know, granted this was the first time that Kenny had done one of these particular forms, but I guess by the time it was done, it's close to 20 pages that you have to do, and this is just the very first form that you have to submit once you've been awarded a grant. And he's had about 32 hours worth of time invested in putting that together. Even someone with additional experience, short of having an engineer that does this on a probably annual basis, as you become more experienced with it, that's still probably a problem. It's gonna take you three days or more, so, and that's just one form that kicks one of these grants off, so they are very time-consuming. And also, since we attended the second mandatory meeting on the recreation grant, the state has requested a number of different written documents from us. We've been sending those back as they request them, so still not sure what the timetable is for getting a contract on that, but we're, just as soon as they ask for a document, we're sending it in to them, so we're trying to keep that moving along as quickly as possible. And with that, I'll take questions.
Questions for the C-manner?
Thank you, sir.
We'll go into our agenda. The first thing on our agenda is we want to recognize a special group of young ladies that is part of our community, a special part of our community, and they was a special part of a state championship team this year. And to me, they are one of the most important parts of that team. I had two girls that cheered all the way from elementary to always through high school. And so as a parent, I know how it is to go and watch and support, and do all the things that you all have done as parents and grandparents and family members, but the girls are the ones that really get out and do it. And I came and watched you all. You've done a great job. You made, you made Harriman proud in all that you do, and the way that you represent not just the school, and not just the city, but the citizens that live within that city. We appreciate you. We appreciate that you take pride in the name that you wear on your uniform. And we just want to recognize you all tonight and say thank you. We have a proclamation. Says honoring the 2018, 2019 Harriman Middle School Cheerleaders. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Harriman is proud to recognize the achievements of citizens of our community, and whereas the 2018, 2019 Harriman Middle School Cheerleaders Squad has spent countless hours practicing and supporting the Harriman Middle School basketball teams, and whereas the hard work, dedication, talent, and exceptional teamwork of the 2018, 2019 Harriman Middle School Cheerleaders helped encourage and support the girls' basketball team, helping them with a state championship title, and whereas the Harriman Middle School Cheerleaders are to be commended for their efforts and their dedication to the Harriman Middle School and their community. Now therefore, I, Wayne Best, mayor of the city of Harriman, do hereby recognize and congratulate Harriman Middle School and the Harriman Middle School Cheerleading Squad on its outstanding accomplishments. What we want to do is have you, young ladies, as we call your name, come up, and we've got a little award for you, so I'll ask the council to step up.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm not a middle school cheerleader. I'm just a coach.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody have brown? She's a volleyball game. Savannah Davidson. She's big. Kendall Davis. Volleyball player. Daisy Kirkland. Bumble. Molly LaRue. Bumble. Katie Muddnells. Thank you all for coming to be a part of our meeting tonight. We appreciate all of y'all doing. Now, we expect to see you all every month here, is that correct? We have another individual tonight that we're gonna recognize and honor with a proclamation for his hard work and dedication, honoring Barry Tibble. Whereas Barry Tibble is a lifelong citizen of the city of Harriman, Mr. Tibble has served on many boards and committees of the city. Mr. Tibble often attends meetings where city business is conducted as an engaged citizen of the city who does so with the intent of being informed as to city business and being available to offer assistance and recommendations when needed. Whereas Barry has volunteered at one time or another with almost every department of the city, including the police and the fire. He has attended a conference of the VIPS program for the police department. Furthermore, he sought and obtained grant funds for the VIPS program. Furthermore, he has often purchased equipment needed to serve in these volunteer roles out of his own pocket, rather than having the city pay for the purchases. In this role, he has often helped coordinate security, traffic control, and other needs during special events and times of emergencies. Whereas this contribution of time cannot possibly be numbered in total. Some of his donations include reinstalling the speakers along Roan Street, changing nearly 100 light bulbs at one time or another at Harriman Library, installing light fixtures to illuminate city facilities, install and maintain security cameras at various city facilities, install lights from a hospital building at Christmas, and assist with the audio and video systems during city council meetings. Whereas his knowledge of the old hospital building has been an invaluable resource to the city as it assesses the future use of the building. He routinely checks on the building and assists with adjusting the mechanical units to keep the building in as good a condition as possible, and to limit expenses to the city for services within the building that are not needed. Now therefore, I, Wayne Best, mayor of Harriman, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim that for all his selfless donations of time and material over the course of many years, all of which is too much to quantify, that he shall be named an honorary member of the Emory Golf Course for 2019 membership year. And if y'all don't believe he does it, just ride around and look. I think last night about 8:00 or 8:30, I'm at the park, and he's down there working on something on the fire memorial. Barry's always working, and we appreciate all the work you do do there. Discussing possibly approved first reading on ordinance 0319-01, and ordinance to amend Title 8, Chapter 2 of the Harriman Municipal Code to amend Section 8-209, regulating the insurance of beer permits for special events within municipal boundaries of the city of Harriman, Tennessee, raising the alcohol limit for beer products to match the new limit adopted by the state. Motion to approve. Motion for Councilman Johnson, second. Second, Councilman Holly. Councilman Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly. Floor is open for discussion. Real quick, so we all understand this. All we're doing is bringing it up to what the council has said to that. I'm sorry.
That is correct. Now, Allison, correct me if I'm wrong, and other city attorneys have drafted the ordinance. As it's written presently, it applies only to special events permits. Is that correct?
That was the particular section of the charter we were looking at, the special events. It currently says a 5% alcohol content, and this is raising it to 8%, which is the current state standard.
Now, the state standard does apply to any type of beer permit, so you could choose to extend that to the other types of permits as well, but the way it's currently written, it's special events only.
Rediscussion. Most council. These are special events that we already basically have going on that we would approve?
There's guidelines within the ordinance as far as what special events can be to obtain a beer permit, other restrictions that are placed upon them. Currently, we do have a request for an event that we have as a regular event, but it would apply, you know, if somebody else came in with a new event that met all of the guidelines for a special event, then it would apply to that new event as well.
But it's limited to locations.
It is very limited location.
There been no discussion. Hold on, please.
Daryl Cook?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Ross?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, discuss and possibly approve declaration of items as surplus for auction. You should have a copy of the surplus items. That was on your packet. Motion to approve. I'll make my own decisions. Motion for Councilman Cook, exacted by Councilman Russell, Councilman Cook.
No.
Councilman Russell.
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, can I point out one thing? Most of what you see on this list is pretty mundane as far as what we do year in and year out. But one thing that I do want to point out that is a little different is the last item on the list, brick pavers, those are the ones that are behind the building that we've talked about auctioning for probably the last five years and we never have done that. We have used some of them in some city projects over time, but those were included on here because there has been discussions on many occasions about auctioning those off, but I did want to point that out because it is a little different than what we normally do in the event that this particular council for some reason doesn't want to include those in the auction.
What we got? Two or three pallets left here?
Probably more.
These are bricks that come up off the sidewalks?
Yes. Thank you. Five, six, seven, eight.
Four. We can get them out for a long time. Every time someone wants the saddle concrete, the city goes in and takes brick up, stacks them up. Already done this. Someone builds a driveway over the sidewalk, that's not a brick, that's concrete, so they'll take this brick up.
Me personally, I mean, I hate to say the bricks leave the city of Herman. They're part of the history of what we are. Those bricks was put up through the historical district way before my time. And what scares me about putting them on auction, you're putting them on good deals and they're probably going to leave here. They're probably nothing. Of course, they're sitting in the back and not doing anything. I like to see us using on something that was the city's, but we've talked about that numerous times.
Did we use some of the fire in the morning?
Yes, we did. A little bit like you, or I maintain my walk out front, my brick walk, and broken bricks and stuff, they're nice to have a place to go get one or replace them. Try to have your own place. I went around scrounging. I bought some for my neighbors, but they'd taken up, stacked over their yard, and we're just sitting there, so I want to.
Let me ask maybe a legal question. I guess we own the bricks, don't we? I mean, I know it's a gray area to do whether we own the sidewalks or whether we don't, and what we maintain and what we don't maintain. And the reason I'm saying that, me personally, I'd rather put two or three pallets of bricks out there than ask anybody in the district that wanted to have them to reuse in our town. If we own them, I'm sure we have to auction them off, we have to do something, but.
Can I interject on this? I happen to know the answer to this question. The mayor and council has the authority to surplus property in any way that seems fit, especially if it comes to a special item like that. So we can set an requirement that these bricks must remain within the city, that local people that are interested in them could bid on at a price, a contention upon approval by mayor and council on the project, that you could even give them away if you chose to. And we could advertise it on our Facebook and website.
I'd rather do that. I mean, if the council.
I would too.
I mean, our motion.
I keep them in the city. I'm going to be some more. There are feet of brick wall.
I would recommend, just so that we're clear on what we're doing, just striking that item from the list, let us rewrite the term, how we want to do this, and bring it back to council at the next meeting.
So your motion is to approve everything except for the bricks. Councilman Cook?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Daryl Cook?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Ross?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, discuss and possibly approve purchasing drug dog from drug fund.
Can you follow up, June? Yes, I laid a paper up at everybody's thing from Highland K9 in Harmony, North Carolina. The narcotics detective came to me a couple of months ago and we're really serious about fighting this drug problem in the city. And he said, we're running into a little bit of a snag. We've got people now that aren't allowing us to do what we want to do. And he said, would you consider letting us have another dog? Well, I told him, the only thing that I could say about that was I wanted a small dog that was drug dog only, something that would be kid friendly, that could go in the schools and interact with the kids and the community in a whole. And I asked him if he would consider maybe a, like maybe a bird dog or something that has a lot of drive. They said yes, so we started looking and we found some German shorthaired pointers in North Carolina that are, you can see on number four on the front page what they will detect. It's listed there. This particular dog, we drove to Harmony, North Carolina a couple of weeks ago, myself and Detective Minnet and Logan Vitato, because he's interested in becoming our canine handler if we get one. And we got to see the dog and got to interact with it and watch it work on finding meth. And what it pertains is if we decide to get this dog, it's a dog we can take out in the community, take to the schools. She's got a very good drive. Right now, she weighs about 20 pounds, will not get over about 30 pounds full grown. The last page is the total price for the purchase of the dog is an invoice, and it includes, when we went over there, we got to see their classroom. It includes three weeks of handler school, lodging for the handler, certification, course materials, free in-service training as long as we own the dog, and free annual recertification. The gentleman at Highland also, you know, told me that at any given time, if the handler has questions or wants them to do something with the dog, he's welcome to go back over there overnight and work with them on their facility. And, you know, they're willing, Detective Minnet said he's willing to purchase it from the drug fund. And I just think it personally would be a great aspect to us. And I'll give you an example. Monday, myself and Lieutenant Onby towed a vehicle from a residential community that wasn't registered, couldn't prove who the owner was. And we had it towed, and within 10 minutes of me towing it, I got a phone call from the wrecker service that said, chief, you need to come down here, I need to show you something. When he was backing it off the wrecker, one of his chains caught a box that was on the bottom of the vehicle with two big magnets wrapped in electrical tape with meth and needles in it that was hidden up under the car. You know, a dog can detect stuff like that. I can't, you know, unless I climbed up under the vehicle, I wouldn't have seen it. But that's just one of, you know, people are coming up with more and more ways to hide their stuff, and dogs can pick up on it. I think it would be an asset to the city, to the community. Like I said, it's a very friendly dog. We got to visit with it for a while, and, you know, I just wanted to bring it to you all to see if y'all would consider letting us have them.
Motion to approve spend $9,890 on drug dog using the drug fund money.
I make a motion?
Second. Motion for Councilman Johnson, second. Councilman Cook, Councilman Johnson.
I think it'd be great. I mean, just think, that box, if it would have fell off when transported and off on the side of the road or something, and some kid or something found it and was going through it, and it had the meth and the needles in it, that could have been disastrous. But I agree with you, it would really help us a lot. That's all I've got.
Councilman Cook.
I'm glad to see the police department being proactive in their drug stance. I think that anything that we can add to the toolbox to combat the drug problem in Herman is a positive move for us.
Floor is open for discussion.
This is a really good breed of dog.
And you said she's what, about nine months or eight months?
She's going on nine months old. I can remember this because her birthday's same as mine, June 29th. She'll be one year old on my birthday, but I can remember her birthday. But like I said, she was a very friendly, sweet dog. Not even knee-high, but very outgoing, and we got to watch her work boxes and find meth. She done a great job. Officer Vitato would be going there at the first of June would be the handler school, so he would be gone three weeks of June to learn with the dog and train with it and be back by July with the dog.
And I read in here, she tracks also?
Yes, she does. She's a very good tracking dog. He said that was one of the qualities, and he explained it to us that this whole room could walk out across the field, but let's say we were looking for Councilman Russell, if we put her in his car and smell his car seat, she only tracks him. She would not track any of us but that person that she was told to track.
So she would go after lavender or something like that.
Sorry, Councilman Russell. You're just the one I was looking at. But we thought, well, at first, I'd actually told the gentleman, we're not interested in that part, we want her for the drugs. But then, the more you think about it, if a child walked off from a school, or maybe somebody with dementia or something, maybe we could help track them with the dog. So yes, it will track and find them.
That's a big plus right there.
Is there any other, is anybody else in the county got one of these dogs?
Not that I'm aware of. No, sir, I'm not even sure. Daryl, does anybody have a drug dog in the county?
Probably has, well, at the moment, no, because they have retired theirs as well.
Yes. I don't even think anyone has one right now. But I told them I would not accept a bite dog. I'm not, I don't want anything like that. I just wanted something that school kids could play with and it'll help us find drugs.
I echo what Councilman Cook said. I appreciate y'all's hard work and things on the roads. I can see a difference on the streets. I can see a difference in the direction that we're going, and you all are doing a great job. We appreciate what you all do for our community.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? Hold on, please.
Daryl Cook?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Ross?
Yes.
Motion carries. David, you was kind of put in on the police, and I didn't call you out. I've been all over this board tonight on this thing. I had to read proclamations and it kind of makes me nervous, so I want to jump back and see if you have anything on codes.
I've been kind of hard on the streets, just shooting from the hip. Well, I think I did six citations last month. Got a couple houses torn down, or a house torn down on Juaney Street. One of those, that was one that I had my eyeball on. The owner did it on their own, so that was no expense to the city. Still continuing working on that. Allison's got the rest of the cases that I had that she needed to address, and I guess she's continuing to work on putting those together to go after these blighted houses that we have in the city. I'll take any questions or anybody asks.
How many cases do we wind up on this next, this last round you gave?
I think it was, are you talking about citation cases?
No, the ones that you, the cases that you've turned over now.
Oh, it's councilman, I can't remember off the top of my head. It's, I'm thinking.
I filed three of them. So I've got three ongoing right now, and they're starting to call me, so you know they're served. The police department's helped with that, and they got the last I served earlier this weekend or last week, and I've got 30 days to respond before I can take my next step. So that's what I'm waiting on.
Now, there were some more that you had that's been sitting for a while, right, that needs to go?
I think we're probably sitting, I'm going to, like I said, I'm just kind of shooting from the hip off the top of my head, I don't know exactly, number probably 15 or so right in there that, you know, need to be, that need to be addressed.
So when are we going to have those going? What's the timeframe on moving forward to those?
I think part of it is giving them their public notice, the 30 days before he brings it to me. Part of it is also finding out the legal owners. There was one property we were ready to file in court, and then we found out it had changed hands through a deed, so we had to start the process over with that new property owner. So I think it's just a matter of finding the people who own it and not just the tenants, if those are two different parties, and then give them their 30 days of public notice. And then technically, after that time, we can file it with the court if we want to. And I'm not sure budget is an issue with that, because he's only got such a certain budget to go through court and demolish it if the city's going to be paying. budget to go through court and to demolish it if the city's gonna be paying for it, it'll add up quickly, and we'll have probably more cases than...
But we can go ahead and get those in the pipeline to the courts to, because that's gonna take a while to get court dates and stuff through the...
Yeah, the chancellor records, um, every few months.
Right, because, I mean, he's only here, what, once a quarter is all the chancellor's here, so if we started getting the motion now to getting those, it may be six to nine months before we actually get on the document.
Um, he's got a court date in May, and depending if I get answers on these ones, we've currently filed, I could request a court date in May, he might have one in June, the chancellor does try to do more of our county work because it's his business county, um, but we can have it going this summer for sure.
If we could go ahead and get those moved forward instead of just sitting on them, I mean, that's, I think that's what we need, that's the only way that's gonna get the attention of some of the people, uh, to get on the cleanup of the property, is to go ahead and see that we're gonna actually take legal action versus sitting on them for months at a time.
Uh, I have, I have a few numbers here for you. It was, it was six citations last month, give it ten verbal warnings, and I towed seven vehicles. I've, on these towing, I know we're plethoraed with a lot of junk vehicles, but for the sake of the, all of our, our three wrecker services in the city, I don't want to just go out there and just bombard their storage lots with, you know what I mean, and go out and just try to nail them, so I've kind of just been easing into them, getting three, four, you know, a week to, and just letting them. That way, they have time to get through it, and they get their, their allotted time that they have to hold the vehicles to give the people a chance to reclaim it, and then they can sell it and revamp some of their, their expense for vehicles. Uh, I'm sorry, let's...
With the vehicles that's out there, this mod rag that is, you know, we, we are putting citation, I mean, we are putting notes on them that we are coming after them, so they know we cleaned it up or it's...
I'm, I'm noticing, if the word must be getting around, uh, as I'm tagging these vehicles, people are either getting rid of them themselves, or they are bringing them into compliance, you know, whether it be getting the tires aired up and the tags up to date on them at that point, you know, it's kind of hands tied when they keep them in compliance, it's important, ask them to say, "Hey, can you come here and drive this vehicle down the road?"
Well, I know you're out working, because I got a complaint yesterday on you, uh, guy towed some stuff out Friday, and before he could get finished on it out, he was on him, and then he was back on him Monday, and he was on me yesterday, and I can handle those complaints. Keep doing what you're doing, uh, we'll just try to clean up them, so.
Hey, David, on that property at Tub Springs that, remember, I went in front and looked at it, and we talked about it, what, whatever happened on that? You said the bank had took it back over, did they pull it?
Bank has, no, he's actually decided he's gonna leave it. Uh, the house that's in front of it is dilapidated, I think he's working with that property owner, and is actually gonna try to take that house and, and tear that one down, which would be basically, as you turn on to Tub Springs, it'd be your very first house on the left.
What about the two empty houses sitting straight across the street up on that wall?
Those are some of the ones that I've given to Glenn, and we're, we're in that, in that limbo.
Yeah, those, those look terrible. They could get those down, that would look a lot better down through there.
That's, that's the next area that I really want to focus on, just because there's, it's kind of plethoraed with several right there, I think that would be kind of easy pickings to go after, so, well, those are, that area's gonna be my next.
Okay, thanks.
Figure area to hit out.
Thanks, sir. Question on, uh, that, uh, Mr. Hammonds, we did a cleanup last year, remember when we did a citywide?
I want to say it was, uh, March, March or April?
I'd like for us to be thinking about doing another one, spring cleanup, to where we go out, and, uh, everybody's done their spring cleaning, uh, you know, I want to help them keep it cleaned up, but...
I had, uh, been intending to discuss that with council on workshops, because I know when we did initially set it up, we said it was gonna be an annual cleanup, so I was gonna see if that was something that, uh, we were ready to do again or not.
Well, similar, we didn't, what was the problem last year when we did, it didn't, a lot of people didn't know about it or something, do we need to, uh, get it out there more so they'll know? Because I know a few weeks afterward, they were complaining because they didn't know about it. Some people were calling me, saying, "I didn't even know about that cleanup, I had set stuff out there."
I think we ran an ad in the paper, I think we put it on our signs, we've done just about everything we can do, but the problem becomes is, if people don't get it set out there in time, all of a sudden they didn't know about it.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying they didn't in any way, but I think that last year I heard a bunch of, uh, from, uh, Mr. Langley, that people said, "Well, I didn't know about it," two months down the road. Well, you know, we, we advertise as much as we can, I think we're live on Facebook tonight, a lot of people can, uh, watch Facebook, uh, we're on the TV thing. We, we'll set a date, and we'll put some stuff out to let everybody know, but it's hard, and, and that's why I think that each year, uh, we need to set it towards the same time of year, instead of, this year it's in May, next year it's in April, next year it's in March, I think we need to set a month every year that that is our spring cleanup month, and that's what we're gonna be cleaning up, so if you've got anything, let's, let's do it during that month, so, maybe we can talk about that here, there in the workshop in two weeks, and, uh, maybe set it up till the next month or three, and then try to keep it annually on the same month, that's our spring cleanup, uh, that's when we're gonna clean, pick your stuff up. All right. Council remarks. Councilman Holly?
Mm-hmm. Go ahead. I, uh, was down there working with them on the temperance building, cleaning up, hauling stuff out, they did a, they did a good job, so, we finally, we've got some more stuff to pack up, but it's small stuff, magazines, newspapers, things like that, but everything pretty good, huh? I had to, the door, where Jaeger's old office is where we put the stuff after we bought it, then found out that I couldn't close the door in Jaeger's office, so I had to go back and take the door off and, uh, clean it, and I better go back where he do the line. I, I discovered that Mr. Jaeger couldn't lock his office when he was there, it was impossible to lock, so I'll fix that before we can lock it up, keep that stuff safe until we get all the way here. It, it's coming along, we'll start cleaning up, get that stuff packaged up, and we'll start cleaning up on the third floor.
Right up there, fourth hallway down. And, and just to let everybody know, most of that stuff is gonna be moving to Princess Theater, uh, upstairs beside of it in the trailhead, uh, Kevin's in the process right now of, of, uh, getting applications to, uh, hire someone to be down there, so, uh, the museum will be open, and use more as a trailhead, this is what it's supposed to be used as, and should've been used as, so, uh, most of our stuff will be down there until we get the temperature to fix and back up to go.
The, uh, some, well, that furniture, uh, David Webb offered to help us get equipment to move to that furniture, and some of that stuff's pretty big. He said he had the dollars in the list, and all this stuff always needs a lot of this to, to get down, if we don't get it down, it gets destroyed.
They're, uh, they're coming along pretty well, um, you know, considering that we've got a two to three person crew on, uh, two rooms that that's gonna go in, uh, they've pretty well finished the sheet rock, and, um, have, uh, got some, uh, covering all of that up, um, so, uh, the floors need to be done, um, they'll, they'll paint the walls, and, uh, the main scene left will be the HBC.
Can't be any worse than what we said, there is no heat, air, water, gas, toilets, so, I mean, any place would be better than that.
But it'll all be black when it dawned.
Hopefully.
She, uh, we, we had her camped out in one of the rooms, because we kept feeding her boxes and wrapping paper, and that's what she did for five hours.
All right. So I guess, that's all we... Thank you. Councilman Russell?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, um, I had a couple people ask me, what's a ordinance as far as, uh, if you're setting up, if you're setting up selling stuff on your property, do you have to have a permit, or if you set up on, like, say somewhere, like on property downtown, like, off to the side, what's the deal with that?
I've always thought that if you set up, uh, not on your property, but you set up somewhere else and you're selling stuff, you have to obtain a peddler's permit, is that...
If you're, uh, selling produce or anything like that, that's, that's growing on your property, you don't have to have a permit if you're on your property, but if you're at some other location, you need a peddler's permit. Other things that people are selling, I think ultimately the city needs to address whether permitting should take place or not, new permitting, uh, because we can't do transient vendor anymore, and, so therefore, peddler's license is basically all we can give, it's a six-months license, and it doesn't cost that much, fifteen dollars, twenty dollars, uh, but it's mostly intended for people who want to sell produce, uh, other kinds of things like that. Now, we, we were very, we're very lenient with respect to yard sales and things like that, you don't try to chase that down, but if they're in a public environment where they're, uh, competing in sidewalk, or otherwise a traffic hazard of some sort, then it's, uh, police department has the opportunity to go in and move them, move them away.
Okay. Yeah, I think one of the things that, that we're, we've been looking at is, uh, Friday night on Rome, uh, like, maybe once a month, I don't know if it's Friday night, once a month, Friday night on Rome, and they're going to have some vendors come set up, uh, throughout Rome Street, and businesses stay open a little later, and I had somebody ask me a question about a lady that needed to sell some jewelry, if she set up a tent and stuff, and I told her, "I, I know she's got a, I'm pretty sure she's got a good peddler's permit, other than that, I don't really know."
Well, we used to sell something called a transient vendor license, but the state changed that, uh, transient vendor's only for those who come from outside the state and come inside to do pending. There is sort of the gray area, undefined area, where people can set up here businesses that have solid structures, that pay property taxes, and there are a bit of an inequity there, so...
So if they buy that peddler's license, it's good for six months?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope, that's all I got.
Councilman Cook?
That'll do it, thank you.
Uh, I've just got, uh, one announcement, uh, the helicopter Easter egg drop is April the 20th, uh, down at the Fire Mill Flats and Papermaker Ballparks, uh, I'd like for everybody to come be a part of it. Uh, we, uh, got the banner today, got it ready, so hopefully when you come across the bridge and the Harriman, uh, within the next couple of days, or, uh, about end of the week, or first next week, uh, that banner will be hanging across, uh, our highways. Twentieth? Easter egg hunt is April the twentieth.
Oh, the twentieth?
Saturday. Twenty-first, twenty. Twenty-first is Sunday?
So it's twentieth?
Twentieth, yeah.
Okay.
The twentieth, I'm sorry. I looked on my calendar before I said that.
They have to register by twelve, don't they?
Uh, registration is at twelve o'clock, uh, there's a lot of great gifts, uh, a lot of, uh, people coming to make this thing happen, uh, I'm excited about it, uh, as we know, uh, it's, it'll say, I think, the fifth annual, uh, there has been a, a church that has been putting this on for the last four years, uh, it got a little bigger than, than they could keep moving with it, so, uh, the city came in and, uh, kind of took it, uh, with them, and, uh, that's what we're gonna do, and I'm excited about it. So, the twentieth, uh, registration, twenty o'clock, twenty o'clock, twenty o'clock, uh, twelve o'clock, uh, first drop, I think, will be at twelve fifteen, and, uh, every fifteen minutes after that, there'll be a drop. One fifteen, man, I need fire, I'm...
Did you repeat that again?
I'm gonna shut up.
Did you repeat that again?
What is it, fire, tell me, I'm... One fifteen? One fifteen? One fifteen's the first drop, I may be gone by then, I'll be at one fifteen, so, if anybody wants to come, I'll be there at twelve o'clock, so, uh, anyway, I'm gonna ask, got most of that, you're on second, Tom Fainrock? Bye. Thank you all.